Good evening and welcome Byron Hills to the Byron Hills Board of Education meeting for Tuesday, September 22nd, 2020. Please rise and join me in the pleasure meeting. I'm pleased with you just to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Okay, those of you who are watching, welcome as we are proceeding with the 2020-2021 school year, I think in amazing fashion. For those of you celebrating the holidays this week, past weekend and next weekend, we wish you a very happy new year.
Happy New Year.
Okay, the meeting was called to order at 7:02, which point the board went into executive session to discuss a personnel matter involving teacher tenure. At this point, are there any comments from members of the public on any items not on the agenda? Hearing none and seeing none. We are, I'm going to propose a revision to the agenda. We are going to pull item 616 for coaching appointments off consent and move it to 10.1.1, which will follow the return to the athletics. And I'm also proposing that we will take, we will not reorder the agenda, but we will take the return to athletics presentation following our adoption of the consent agenda. Okay? Do those change, please? May I have a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please? And may I have a motion to adopt tonight's consent agenda as amended for personnel, special services, and business?
Second.
All in favor, please? Okay, thank you. That brings us to, as I said, we're going to go to 10.1, return to athletics, and then we turn it over to the superintendent.
Okay. I have Rob Castagney here tonight, the Director of Athletics, and Rob and I have spent a considerable amount of time together and apart in various conversations about the return to athletics. We have received information from the New York State Public High School Athletic Association. I finally got it right, right, Rob? After all these years. And we have received information from Section 1, and Rob has had meetings with Conference 2, and I have had meetings with the Southern Westchester Superintendents Association and the Putnam Northern Westchester Association with athletic directors. In the conversations about, as you can only imagine, the return to athletics is very much like our return to school looked, with guidance that had questionable sections to it, that we needed much more clarification on, with an understanding by superintendents and A.D.s, that we really need to have one set of rules moving forward, the same expectations for every visiting team, every team that is functioning in their own school environment, regarding spectators, regarding masks. So Rob has put together a presentation tonight to talk about the document, which we have been working on together, and we still have some spots on the document that we are waiting for further guidance about. To give you an idea of the complexity, the Putnam Northern Westchester BOSI superintendents and A.D.s were on a call the other day, and we said specifically about the masks issue that we needed Department of Health guidance. So we wrote to Dr. Amler to say, can you please get on a meeting with all of us to give us guidance about masks? Because there is a section of the mask wearing where it says that you have to wear a mask at all times unless a student athlete cannot tolerate it. Well, I have no idea what "cannot tolerate" it means. Somebody said, well, that means they need a doctor note. Somebody else said, no, it doesn't. It means if they're running and they can't deal with it, they just take it off. And somebody else said, well, if they know they can't tolerate it, they never have to wear it during play. So everybody had very different versions of what that looked like. When we asked, Dr. Amler said that she could not meet with the superintendents, but fortunately, Dr. Dial Hewlett, who is on the contact tracing task force for Westchester County, has agreed to meet. Rob had a marathon meeting today, much of which was about masks also. So just to give Rob a lot of credit for a lot of work around this, because it's not that easy. So we are really fine tuning every detail, just like we had to do with the return to school protocol. It's just, we're all living in a very different world, and people are writing things that they think are clear, and there is a lot of room for interpretation, which we, which can be dangerous and we don't want. So I welcome you, Rob.
Thank you, Jen, and thank you for explaining or attempting to explain the complexities of having 70-plus school districts in Section 1 athletics come down to agreeing on the fine print, or not the fine print, the print, really the print, inside of a document that was released by the New York State Public High School Athletic Association. And as we interpret it, we've had questions, and which leads us to what Jen just mentioned and what I'll try to explain in this presentation here this evening. So I will start by explaining the four seasons that have been presented to us by the Public High School Athletic Association. We are about to, we're scheduled to enter Fall Sports Season 1 on the 29th. There are the sports listed there on the board under Bullet 1. And for the practice requirements, you know, every athlete must have 10 practices, must be in attendance for 10 practices to be eligible to participate on the team roster in the sport. And the seven consecutive day rule, that will be waived starting October 12th. So what is the seven consecutive day rule? Well, what that is, is normally, in normal circumstances, when the regular season is completed and the team moves into postseason play, the athletes and the coaches can meet seven days in a row. Outside of that, they may not. Well, on October 12th, because we're on a condensed season, they are, the state is waiving that seven-day rule, even though we will not be into postseason by that time. And modified sports are presently on pause, and there is a, there is a meeting tomorrow that, that may be determined whether Section 1 schools will participate in modified athletics or not. And there's complexities there that they're working through, and we should have the answer by tomorrow, hopefully. There are, nothing is permitted, no, no sports can start before the 29th, as stated, and girls swimming and diving is part of, that there will be an agenda item on that meeting tomorrow as well, for deciding whether we will have girls swimming and diving this season. And really, that decision lies with the availability of swimming facilities in, in Section 1. And the APP process, the Athletic Placement Process, is really a district decision, but I felt it was best, and speaking with Dr. Lamia, we felt it was best to wait until the modified decision is announced before we really determine that APP final decision. Okay?
Rob, can we talk a little bit about field hockey TBD?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, thank you. We, we were scheduled to merge with Briar Cliff High School for our field hockey team. We, we both were anticipating low numbers on the roster, figuring that we merge, we'd have enough for one full varsity team. Fast forward, the COVID environment, we didn't think it was in our community's best interest to do this, to really step out of our cohorts. So we, we stepped away from the merger, we mutually agreed to step away from the merger and run our own teams. And right now, as I, as I stay here, as I'm here speaking before you, it looks very good that we're going to have enough participants for our varsity field hockey team.
I can't watch you struggle with that now.
Thank you.
So Rob, do you think that, is that because some sports like volleyball, that would normally have conflicted with field hockey, are not happening? So maybe those kids are looking for other sports to play, or?
One second, no talking.
Yes.
Stick to Lamia's rules.
So we, we anticipate volleyball has moved to the Fall Season 2, and we have.
To the Spring.
I'm sorry, for the, well, it's, it's Fall Season 2.
Fall, yeah.
It's classic.
It's Fall, yeah, correct.
What about girls golf?
Golf is remaining in the spring. It was never.
They're always in the spring?
It's, it's still in the spring.
So boys and girls are in the spring?
Yeah, that's the official spring season, which I'll get to in a moment. That's for golf. But with the teams that are not playing now, we anticipate having that, the numbers for others.
Sparking some new interest.
For athletes who want to play, but their, their sport has been moved. So it's working out, it's the silver lining that we.
Rob, is it really a JV, girls, field hockey, just varsity?
Right now, we'll have enough for a varsity team. I, I don't anticipate having enough for two teams.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So Rob, just one question to, even before we get to this, that I'm just curious about, because you're closer to it than I am. So the, the section obviously gave the decision to move forward. Nassau County did it, Suffolk County did, I think a lot of counties north of us did. What was, what was going, like, what was their rationale in terms of how to keep it safe for kids and move forward versus all these other counties around us that just decided not to, or sections, I should say, in these counties?
It really was a discussion that they had about the sports that they felt they could safely run, and, you know, could they, and does, were there enough districts in that section who felt that way? And I believe in those sections, those other sections, they didn't have, they didn't have the support from the school districts to, to run, to run a program. That's basically what, that's what I believe, what I've been communicating and came down to. Sorry, John, must be, must be me with these masks today, sorry.
You just have to pinch the nose.
Go ahead, Rob.
Okay, so I'll, I'll move on to the next slide. So the winter season scheduled to kick off on November 30th. The sports listed there are traditional winter sports for the winter season. Once again, the modify, right now is, is on, is on pause along with freshman basketball. Freshmen is in the modified category for scheduling purposes for Section 1. And the, the plan from the state is to try to schedule postseason tournament, state championship, as it normally, it normally would, if we're lucky enough to do that.
Right now in the fall, it's limited to sectional titles, correct?
Correct. Correct.
Okay.
And here we got broken down to two, the two sports, the two seasons that would take place in the spring season, Fall Sports Season 2, and our traditional spring season. Traditional spring was moved back to April 19th to make room for the Fall Season 2. And that's where we've placed the high-risk sports listed there. The number of practices required for each of those sports is listed, and the seven, the seven consecutive day rule that I mentioned earlier is waived for the entire season for Fall Sports Season 2. And that's because it's a condensed season. That's why they give, giving sections that option, giving districts that option. Doesn't mean we have to go seven days in a row, but it means we have that availability.
What if somebody's playing a Fall 2 and a spring sport? And is, is there overlap?
No. There's a little bit of overlap there, there will be a little bit of overlap. So if you look at the, one of the bullets on spring sports season, the spring sports season, the second bullet, the Fall Sport Season 2 athletes may carry over three practices for all sports except for baseball, which may carry over four.
So there'll be.
Rob, are you sure there would be overlap? I thought that's the reason they were cutting off regional, state playoffs to keep the overlap to eliminate.
No, so, so it says there, it would, it would still be, there would still be an overlap, there would still be an overlap. It may, we believe it'll be one week overlap, and that's the reason for giving the athletes the practices to catch up. So they, in other words, they're conditioning, they're in place, they're in practice, and it should work for them. And it's, the section, the state has done that before for other, other reasons, and that's, that would help out those athletes.
Can I ask you another question?
Sure.
I'm just thinking of questions that people are asking me. Why is basketball not considered high-risk, but volleyball is, and they're both indoor?
Well, basketball, we, we haven't gotten there yet, we haven't gotten to that point, but that will be, those will be reevaluated as we get closer before those seasons are kicked off.
Okay, so it's just a timing thing?
It's a timing thing.
Putting on a vaccine.
Yeah.
Not that fast.
Yeah. That could be a tough one, basketball.
Yeah. For practice and game safety, we will discouraging, we will discourage sharing of any equipment. Every student athlete will have their temperature taken daily before practice. We have athletes coming from home who are remote learning, and we will, we have a designated area for the athletes to report to, we'll give them a screening, and then they will go off to their practice. We'll encourage everyone to stay six feet apart with some signage that we, we've acquired, and also reminders from our staff and our coaches. The face masks, we're going to require at all times on our campus. Dr. Lamia mentioned some of the discussions that are taking place presently. We've had some discussions today about how to, how to really monitor that and, and have a consistent message within Section 1 athletics for athletes wearing masks. And with the 79 schools, we're narrowing, we're trying to narrow that down to one message, or at least, at least to the teams that we're playing. In our league play, you know, the leagues that we play in with Ardsley and Edgemont and, of course, really, so, so we, we're going to, we're actually meeting this week to create a unified plan that we will be using common language and, and common protocols for whether we're playing home or whether we're playing away. And that's on our agenda, that's the top of our agenda for this week.
We're really hoping, hoping for some blanket guidance, but absent that guidance, we at least want all of the teams we play to have the same set of rules.
Oh, I'm so sorry, are we still expected to hear something from the state regarding athletics, or any, or any other?
At this point, not, it won't come from the state, it would come from the section.
Just come from the section. And they've already met, so we have to go ahead, or are they, are they planning to meet again?
The section's meeting again.
When are they, when are they?
There's one meeting tomorrow, that I know of, that's a, there's several items on their agenda for tomorrow.
Well, that's, so they're meeting tomorrow, we don't know of any other meeting thus far after that.
No, nothing scheduled.
But I think if they don't resolve things tomorrow, they have to meet again soon because sports start soon.
Exactly.
And this is very consistent with what I've heard just from other school boards in the area, that the guidance around athletics was particularly unclear and complex and differentiated depending on where it was channeled, recreational, or, you know, even when you're doing a gym class versus what you're doing with this.
Yes.
So I'm glad that you're working as hard as you can with the other districts to try to figure this out.
Absolutely.
So I think it's really paramount importance.
Thank you.
And put pressure on the health department and let us know what we can do from a school board perspective to be helpful now.
Yes, it, it is extremely important, and, you know, we were, everybody has worked so hard to open the schools and to get the children back, and they're excited to be there. We're all excited to have, to be back at school, and we want this to, to stay the course.
But this is the one spot where we're, the co-boarded is out the window, right?
Yeah, that's right.
So we need to be, that's the one spot. We're at least on school grounds, we, we obviously, we take control.
And this appears to be the one area that the state mandates have sort of.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
Been eliminated, and the governor sort of said, figure it out yourselves.
Yeah.
Which has a plus and a minus to it, so.
So you will allow parents and spectators, but there are going to be guidance?
We are waiting to figure that out.
That's, that's one of the items also on the agenda, that we are waiting for some guidance from the section, because we know there has to be a unified message there as well, for, for everybody's safety. So right now, the discussion is perhaps, perhaps the first week of games, perhaps there are no spectators, and then progressing to home spectators only, two per athlete. And that's, that's what we're, that's what's in discussion right now, but soon to be approved, and we'll see what that final language is.
And board members.
And board members.
Well, my, my concern is, in New York, we can't have gatherings of more than 50 people, correct?
Yeah.
So now you have a team of 20 people outside, and you have two parents per child, so now you're well over the 50.
Yeah, so, so what we'd have to do, we have to, in our plan, we would appropriately distance the spectators in the crowd, the parents who are in the, in the bleachers. We have to appropriately have signage for where they, where they may stay.
But Lori, you're, you're exactly right. So this is the classic case of the New York State Public High School Athletic Association did this document, and they said 50%, right, of, of what a normal place would hold is what their parameter was.
I thought it was gatherings of 50 people.
No, no, this is the New York State Public High School Athletic Association, right? Then we have New York State Department of Health guidelines. And we saw this before in the New York State Guidance for the Return to Schools versus the Department of Health Guidance, and when we brought up those disparities, they said always defer to the Department of Health Guidance. So that is ultimately what we would have to defer to.
Rob, one of the questions for you is, I guess, since we're on hybrid, so presumably students often find their transportation on the days that they're not in school to go to practice or a game, which is understandable, given the circumstance, no choice.
Yes.
I guess, are you, what is your view on just, in a normal year? Athletics is a serious endeavor, especially varsity athletics, as it should be, and it's intense and competitive. I'm not saying to lose all that, but is there going to be some discretion for the fact that due to family circumstance, getting a kid to practice, especially if you're talking about like six days a week, when some days they're not going to be at school, may be impossible? So are there, is, will there be dispensation and just some relaxation of some of the requirements?
Yes, we did, we did discuss that in our coaches meeting, with the coaches that we had last night. We had a virtual coaches meeting with our fall coaches in attendance, and we, we spoke about that, about how this is, this is new to families, this is new to the athletes, and we need to make sure that we're laying out, we're, we're laying out a program that when the, when the students and the athletes step into this, although, although we want them to take it seriously, we cannot smother anybody with it, we have to be flexible. Just as we're being flexible during, during the school day, we have to be flexible after school, and we have to let them know that we are in tune with different family concerns. And also, on the, on the, on that note, there are, there may be families that have different health concerns, and may be in contact with us more than other, other families, and we have to be understanding those, the, the different dynamics that are presented to us.
I appreciate that. And then the other element is that this year, because we're hybrid, and if you're taking a very rigorous high school course load, it's somewhat more time consuming in a way, because you're, you're learning more on your own.
Yes.
So just by nature of our, you know, reality, and so it's going to be harder to juggle what you usually can juggle in a normal year.
So, so my, my opening remarks to the coaches yesterday was, this is a season where we hopefully bring the student athletes together, we have them participate in the sports that they love, we have them socialize, and we build memories. This is not the time, we are not focused on state championships, we are not focused on, you know, we want to win, the kids want to win their games, of course, but, but there's a different shift in our focus, and we have to be mindful of the families and the student athletes, because they're, everyone's going through a lot at this time. And that was my opening remarks to everybody, and even the coaches, and, and they appreciate that too, knowing that we have to really be in touch with, with people and how they're feeling and what, and what they're experiencing. So that, that was the opening message yesterday.
Rob, what about transportation to away games? Will they still be on the bus?
Yes, so we have 20, our largest bus is 22 seats, so we would permit one student per seat on a, on a bus, and where.
Meeting 22 students.
I'm sorry.
It's actually like a 56-person.
Yeah.
No, it's like a 56-person bus, but.
But there are 22, 22 actual benches.
Yeah.
Sorry. And they'll, and there, we will allow one, one student athlete per bench in the bus.
And since we are not running activity buses and not doing all sports, we will have enough buses if we need to, have two buses going to one.
Yeah, no, I was just thinking, if you're not going to allow spectators, how the kids can, you know, if the parents can't drive them.
But I think, but if parents do want to drive, which my guess is some will, then are we permitting that?
Yes, some parents will opt to drive.
But definitely not students.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not going to open it up that a student drives themselves, the road is structured and they drive.
So apparently, you're saying, but a student can't drive alone.
Right.
And the parent may have to sit in the car in the parking lot if spectators aren't allowed.
It's possible.
Right.
Yeah.
Do any of the fall teams have a roster of more than 22? Would you need to utilize two buses for a team?
Yes, it's, it's very possible that we could have more than 22.
Football. Soccer, we could easily have, or just varsity, where soccer alone would be more than 22.
We've, we've already had those conversations about how we would navigate that. So the locker rooms, we will allow athletes to change in locker rooms. There will be designated areas in each locker room. So for example, we've measured out the locker rooms, and we can fit nine students appropriately distanced in a locker room. They'll, they'll go to a number, they'll change, they'll take all the belongings, and they'll exit the locker room and go to their designated practice location.
So no student keeps anything in a locker?
So we're not issuing lockers at all, it's just a changing location, and everything travels with them, and then when they go outside to their field or their court, there'll be a location where they put their belongings, appropriately distanced from the other students, and that would become their, their new norm for the season for changing. The students who are coming home, who are learning from home, who are learning remotely that day, they will come to school changed, so they won't need to go into the locker rooms. Individual water bottles with, with their names on it, we're recommending each student athlete come with approximately 40 ounces of water to get them through a practice or a game if an, if a student athlete runs out of water. We will have one central filling, refilling station that will be supervised.
Made by a barista.
It, it will be supervised.
That's true.
We will have that station monitored consistently throughout the day, so that one student can approach it with a touchless water system that we have to refill the water bottle.
For both teams.
For both teams. For both teams.
Yeah, because if they're coming right from school, they're not going to be carrying around 40 ounces of water.
No, but they, we have water filling stations all throughout this school, so they.
They can fill up in the building with a touchless system, and then they can come out, and then we'll have another one outside for the students that we have, that Dan Santora put together for us.
Welcome, is that the locker room considered to be used as changing stations? And I presume more than two teams could be using it, will they be cleaned regularly?
Good, good question. Visiting teams have to come dressed and ready to play. And that, in, in one of my later slides, I'll explain how they will not have access to indoor facilities. They, they come prepared, ready to go, and the same, when we, we have to expect the same when we go to someone else's facility.
But they can use restrooms.
They can use restrooms. And right now, for the outside areas, for the, for the, for the games taking place outside, we would make available the bathrooms by the concession stand. They're outdoors. And if they're, this question came up, and we, we decided that if, for example, you may have been to a game, an occasion where there's a thunder or lightning delay, for a 30-minute delay. If we, if we're in that situation, the game is ended, we move on to the next day. We're not going to bring people in and monitor them for, for 30 minutes or 45 to 50 minutes, 60 minutes. Thunder, lightning, we call it, we move on, we move on to the next day, and wherever it is in the game, we'll, we'll just move on.
I think this year is less of an issue than any year with that.
Yeah. So with cleaning of, of equipment, it will be cleaned at the end of every practice and at the end of every game. We're working with Steve Thompson and Dave Isom, with a system to lay out the equipment and clean it every day after practice and after games, so that it's ready for the next day. Parents and spectators, I, I touched on that already. Additional player seating was purchased, we have that for our sidelines, so that we can space out the athletes appropriately while they are on the sideline during, during the games. And outdoor signage, we also have that, where we have eight, eight signs that we'll put on the fence, that we'll put on little walkways, there, there are signs that remind people to wear their mask, to wash their hands, and to stay six feet apart. So that will help us, I'm sure, and help us be consistent. And for coaches, every coach has completed a, a COVID-19 course offered by the National Federation of High Schools. And I've taken the course myself, and it is, it's a very good course, it's about 30 minutes, and it reviews everything basically that we need to know, and makes, made us think about a few things throughout that course. So every coach will complete, complete that course. I mentioned yesterday the coaches meeting that we had, the virtual meeting, with our varsity and JV coaches. Today, we had a review, we reviewed the procedures for return to athletics document that we've put together, our 17-page document. We've, I've, Jen and I have put that document out, we've shared it with members of the community, officials association. we've shared it with members of the community, officials association representative, some of our coaches, and some of our parents, and we sent them the document ahead of time, and then we've gotten feedback, and then we had a final review of that document this afternoon. Tomorrow, we will be sending out our preseason coaches messages to all of the parents and athletes that are sports-specific, those are posted on our, on our website tomorrow early evening, and, and then from there, I anticipate questions, right? Everyone's going to have questions, because this is new, as we know, to everybody. So on Thursday, we're sending out a Google form to all of the parents, letting them know, reminding them that you will have questions, we anticipate questions. Friday, we will host a Google meeting, I will be hosting it with the coaches, and my assistant and Dan Santora, our athletic trainer, that are sports-specific, and every sport has a 20-minute time slot, that we will allow everyone to, to, to join us in virtually and ask questions of the coach, and the coach will give her more information, and I can answer any questions that the parents may, and the athletes may have.
Just for fall one?
Just for fall one.
Just fall one.
Just fall ones, yes. Sorry, thank you for asking that, just for fall one.
Are you going to be posting answers to frequently asked questions about this on the website?
Yes, and we're, we're also working on a Q and A sheet that we plan on posting on the website. Yeah, forgot to mention that, thank you.
So, Rob, you are, I know you are, giving out the document tomorrow.
Yes.
And then you are asking if there are any questions on this Google sheet, and you plan to meet with the parents in a Google meet on Friday for any questions, they have to answer those questions?
We'll, we'll answer any questions they have.
On Friday?
On Friday.
Yeah, it's probably a good idea, because people don't read, you know, me included sometimes, right? So it's probably a good idea if we do some sort of highlights to go along with the document, and specifies only for fall.
Yes, good, yes.
Otherwise, I think, you know, you don't-
So, when we start on Tuesday, the 29th, this is going to be the first round of tryouts?
Correct.
And those, that's going to be after school?
That will be after school, and we will have, that's our fir-, our first day.
The reason I ask is, you know, years, you know, many times tryouts would occur early in the morning, I know that would also be before school started session, I was wondering whether we even have any early tryouts before the school day began, for any sports.
No, everything will be after school. And our student athletes, we talked about the face coverings, we're, we're still on that topic as, as we're talking about it in our upcoming meetings, and, yeah, so anybody who could not tolerate, they'll see me, and-
Is this, is this face covering on the, in other words, during a game, are the soccer players going to be wearing masks, or only when they're on the bench or off the field they put a mask on?
So this is, this is what is unclear.
Yeah.
And so this is what we're looking for the Department of Health guidance on?
These guys that be running, or girls that be running and running, and they're going to be fussing around with their masks.
And then we have to take breaks.
And whether that's going to work, damn it.
Yeah, it's, it's something we really have to, we'll get to the heart of it.
You know, the, the mix up is, if we have a PE class, they have to be 12 feet apart from each other, if they're going to be doing any kind of activity. And now, are we saying that we're going to have them on top of each other without a mask at all? I mean, that does, that strikes against the guidance that we're doing.
You might be, that's-
The guidance just doesn't, it doesn't, it's not consistent.
Yep.
Okay.
This is good, all right, Rob.
And we'll remind them to socially distance, and I mentioned again about the water bottles, and washing their, their uniforms and their personal equipment frequently, and daily, sorry. Visiting teams and traveling to games, we talked about the, the buses, the transportation. I will be, my office will be communicating to, to each school that we are competing against in advance, to just establish that that protocol is in place, any reminders, any, anything that has popped up for the day that we should be alerted to prior to our team arriving, or the other team arriving here. We'll have our own medical supplies, alert schools to locker room availability, or, or no locker rooms that, that may not be available, and, and the temperatures will be taken, as I mentioned, before practices and games, and the schools who are coming to Byron Hills will have their athletes screened for, temperature screened as well.
Do we know yet from the Department of Health and Academy if there's a case, let's say we play T-Mex, and then there's a case that pops up two days later on of COVID on T-Mex, what the quarantine rules are for sports, so will they quarantine both teams? Will they not quarantine both teams? Does it depend on whether they're wearing masks or not masks? Because that also-
So, so this is going to be surprising to you, we have no idea.
Yeah.
There's no, there's no decision tree around that.
Because there really should be, there should be a decision tree.
I mean, now, it's like, are you in a room masked for less than 10 minutes? Right, there's a, there's a parameter that you can use, but we've seen nothing for outside.
Well, this is also something-
It's new.
-families have to take into account when, when they're signing up for sports this year, that this is not the typical year, and we will do everything at Byron Hills to keep our, our students and our community safe, but this is a family decision, I think, you know, that's what it's going to come down to.
The difficult part, though, is that how can you make the family decision if we don't even have a decision about masks?
Right, exactly.
Right, so if I want my kid to wear a mask, and it's going to matter, and I'm not going to let them play if they don't wear one, then I feel like I can't make a decision yet, and-
Because are we going to be informed if there's a case on the other team, or are we not even going to be informed, right? We don't need to know who it is, but I think it'd be nice-
We will only be informed, that I know, if the Department of Health deems that they, our kids could have been affected.
Right, which if they have a decision tree, it makes all the sense in the world, but if we don't have a decision tree, it, is, is it depend on who you get into our department to call?
Yeah, I think they just haven't come across this yet.
But I think Byron Hills will follow every single protocol. My, my concern is that families are like, oh, Byron Hills says it's completely safe, we're following every protocol, I still believe it's a family decision.
There's a way.
Based on the protocol that we have in place, and it changes every day, they have to understand that this is a family decision, and we'll make it as safe as possible.
That's why I thought that it was also important to have those conversations on Friday-
Absolutely.
-before we start, and let parents digest this a little bit, and then ask us questions. I think that will help, I think that'll help every family who, who needs to ask those questions. Remaining planning-
I would just, I would just bring up one, I mean, I think, you know, just two seconds of feedback if you don't mind, number one, I applaud you for the energy around this, because I think our kids really want this, and are, are all desiring to get back to some sense of normalcy, and, and I strongly feel that way. The, the problem is, this just kind of cuts against the grain of all the-
Absolutely.
The grain of all of the work we've been doing with respect to being safe, and it's just, it's challenging, you know? It's very challenging to just digest it all, so.
Understood, yes.
I'm very appreciative of the energy, so.
Thank you, thank you, and the energy where you just mentioned that the student athletes need this, they want this. When I walked into the building today, I had a conversation, a quick conversation with a field hockey player, and I asked her four or five questions, and her answers made my day. You know, just listening to the enthusiasm that she had, and the, the excitement for, for this opportunity that Tuesday, she'll, she'll be involved in her sport, it, it was fun to hear that, but we, with that, as you mentioned, there is still that, that other side of it, where we have to make sure that everything is in place, because of everything the district has done to this point, look where we are and how successful we've been.
And we're looking for the larger pieces, right? The guiding pieces, we're not even looking, you know, the granular pieces are happening too, so what exactly does a soccer practice look like? How are you keeping kids socially distanced when they're on the sidelines? How are they going to know where to stand? Like, at the elementary level, you know, when we're watching these kids come out every day to get in their cars, they're jumping on a blue dot, which are 36 feet apart, right? Like, so where, what's going to happen when we're out there as a soccer team? So, you know, what you're seeing, Rob, doing with this document, it's, there's so much more work involved in making sure that the implementation of all of those practices and games conform to what we're looking at.
How is all of this affecting, like, the seniors, and even, maybe even some juniors who are relying on, like, this season for scholarships and stuff like that?
Big challenge for them.
Yeah.
And I feel for each and every one of them that is going through the process, especially where we, I spoke to the, the coaches yesterday in the meeting about college visits, where normally, we would allocate a weekend or two for athletes to have college visits, and now, could they, can they even go for a college visit to, to their, their virtual?
Right, where their scouts come to watch their game.
Yeah.
So, yes, it is, it is a lot on that. Once again, another reason why I felt it was important to start with my message, opening the meeting yesterday, that there's a lot on their minds, and a lot that they've had to digest over the past six months, especially student athletes in that, in that category. So, remaining planning and issues, I, I believe I've, I've touched upon all of the bullets on this slide except for the bottom one, the senior games, where we'll try to get the senior games in as, as soon as we can, first or second game of the season, and, and allow the, the parents to come and take pictures, and, and make it fun, keep it safe, and make it fun.
I'm sorry, what are the senior games?
Senior games, sorry, sorry, I should have clarified that. Senior games are where we recognize our seniors. Usually, I didn't say this, but usually it's, it's the last game of the season.
Their home game, yeah.
It's the last home game of the season, usually.
But just in case.
Yeah, we jump it right up to one of the, through the, the first game of the season.
Which is nice.
Yeah, the kids really like it, the parents love it, it's, it's a, it's a nice event.
Probably one of the most emotional things that I have experienced in my life, walking off the field for the last time with your kid after they played, you know, a high school sport, and they'll never be back on that field, so it's a very big deal.
It is, for some of them, it's the end of their competitive sports career.
Yeah.
Unless you're me, of course.
That's right. A touch football career goes on and on.
Rob? And the last slide, once again, the conversations that Dr. Lamia and I referred to that are still taking place around the clarification for masks, we're waiting for the votes for the swimming teams in Section 1, those are, are ongoing discussions.
Rob, just, what happens if there's no agreement? Then, and they, or, or an agreement that's not to our satisfaction in terms of how would the safety?
Then, we, I, myself, and us will, will have to have a, will make a tough decision, and, and what it is that we feel can keep our athletes safe and our community safe, and our school community safe.
Ultimately, that decision will come here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ultimately, that's a board decision, how we, you know, the competition aspect, what we want to do.
Yeah.
It may well come back to us, so. I, I, one sport we didn't mention, I don't know if we still do it anymore, how, how's wrestling being treated?
Wrestling, right now, nothing has changed with wrestling, the conversations for the winter sports are going to ramp up in mid-October, second week in October.
I'm not sure M.A.S. will do a lot of good in that sport.
Oh, yeah, I think, yes, yeah, that's, that, that'll be a-
Do we still have a wrestling team?
I'm sorry?
Do we still have a wrestling team?
We have a wrestling team, we're, we have a-
Combined, I know Bay Hall was that combination team.
Yes.
They voted GPS and, and business park.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So presently, that is on the schedule, but more conversation has to be had there for that sport as well.
Another question for you is, how is COVID, if you, is it a discussion, how COVID is going to affect the availability of officials for these games?
Yes, that was a discussion early on with Section 1 and New York State Public, they sent out surveys to all the Section 1 officials, and they've communicated to all of the member schools that they are in good shape with enrollment, and the officials who are accepting, accepting assignments here in Section 1.
For all the sports that are being, that are going forward.
Yes, and that's also coming into the, that's for varsity and junior varsity.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's part of the decision with modified.
Yeah.
Is the, is the official's availability for that.
You may have coaches referring to modified.
Yeah. We've, we've had that in normal circumstances.
Sure, sure. It's one way to deal with the officiating problem of not having enough, you just skinny everything down, and it's crazy.
In club volleyball, the kids, the girls officiate themselves, they take online courses to certify, and they do an on-off, work a game, play a game.
Yes.
Any other questions on the board for Rob?
Thanks, Rob.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you, hard work, thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you, Dr. Lamia, for this opportunity, thank you for your help with the, Tim, with this, with the slides.
Well, this isn't going to, this is not going to excuse the number of section championships we expect from you, you realize that.
I was expecting that.
All right, good.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, based on the presentation from our esteemed director, I think we can now move to 10.1.1 on the agenda, which is the former 6.1.6 on the agenda, the all coaching appointments, have a motion, please, to adopt the all coaching appointments that set forth on the list attached to 616.
Second.
Just a second, please, any, any discussion on this? All in favor? Okay, thank you. That moves now back to nine board goals. Madam Superintendent?
Thank, thank you. So recall the last time we started looking at board goals, we really thought that we needed to look at the 2020, 2021 school year during the COVID pandemic, and our goals, your goals as board centered on the implementation of the return to school plan. So under that, under the titles that we have become accustomed to keeping on our board goals, the first being teaching and learning with a real focus on in-person instructional models, hybrid instructional models, and remote. Our social-emotional health goal of staff and students, really supporting that of social-emotional health by encouraging continued partnerships, and we continue to do this, as we saw changes in schedules at the high school, which really reflected a lot of the conversations with Stanford University, continuing to have the University of Michigan consulting with our teachers, particularly from the Depression Center and the School of Education, and really looking at these, the time to sports students, both at the beginning and end of the day that we saw pretty much in our high school schedule, and then during the wellness periods that we saw at the middle school. So, you know, if, if COVID did anything, it sort of forced us to put some of that into place a lot faster than I think that we would have. Regarding health and safety, watching the continually changing CDC information, the, I mean, it's here and then it's gone, right? I mean, literally, it comes in and then it's, it's taken back away. But, you know, there, there's also to be patient with everyone, this is my, my learning from COVID. People are experiencing these things for the first time, and if we're all going to sit and criticize every little in and out, we're not going to be in very good shape. It does cause distrust at some times and an uncertainty, but recognizing that these organizations are dealing with something they never have before. So, but really following the changes, because there are a lot of changes often, Department of Health, New York State Education Department, American Academy of Pediatrics, and also really looking now at this whole new athletics piece that you saw, and understanding the distinction between what the high school athletic association is saying, and what the Department of Health has, is their guidelines may not do the same thing to them. So just keeping abreast of all that, and, you know, having our own mitigation plans regarding COVID. Fiscal accountability and communications, Scott, did you want to speak to that? That was something that I had sort of put together some concepts about, and Scott really refined it, I think, very well, if you wanted to bring, talk about that.
Sure, just briefly, what we tried to do is think about the near-term implications of COVID, and the economic crisis more broadly, and the potential cuts from the state, which are still, you know, unknown, and won't be known for some time, as well as think through the longer-term fiscal planning, which is everything from a five-year forecast to thinking through, you know, long-term impact of collective bargaining agreements, and capital projects, and pension, and healthcare, and enrollment trends, many of the items that we, you know, we always want to think about when we have a longer-term view. So it's really, you know, just focus the goals on the short term, and then the long term. And I think on the short term, it's really the COVID-19 expenditures, how we're going to fund them, and then it's what's going to happen to our state aid, and if it declines, what are we doing?
That's great, thank you, Scott. Any questions on that? That was different from the last time, so I don't know if anybody wants to take a second to look at that, or if you have the opportunity, and the board docs.
I just think the, accenting the enrollment trends, I mean, we've sorted in the best data that, that, you know, a slight pickup in enrollment, and it seems like that, that's a pretty significant factor, that doesn't seem to be changing too quickly, and if anything, will gain a little bit more, you know, momentum as people, you know, migrate out of the city.
Yeah. When does the state have to let us know about?
About the-
About the reductions?
Well, the, the last guidance was November that we may hear something. I think they're waiting to see what happens with the election.
Yeah, so good news is the September payment was fully issued, you know, last time we spoke, July and August, that they held back 20%, so we got the full payment, September payment, which is great.
Yes. Yes.
The report's supposed to come out, and they're supposed to release it to legislatures at the end of this month, maybe early October. So we'll know a little more going forward, and then they have 10 days to evaluate and make any adjustments. So right now, I mean, it's good news we got full September, but we don't know going forward what that's going to be. You know, there's that, that measurement period that just ended, and there's a measurement period to December where they can make another adjustment. So we should know something hopefully by the end of the month, but I don't, probably likely be more towards middle October, and then we should know kind of where we're going.
And the tone's been a little more constructive overall, but it's not that I would say more constructive as it relates to districts like ours, because I think they've been saying that they, they, they're going to try not to cut 20% into the districts at the, if their lowest resource is at the spectrum, but...
That, that's going to have to be a policy.
Yeah, we don't, we don't know, we don't know, right? But when you go back to when the GEA happened, it was more, more of what Scott's saying, it was more towards keeping the high need districts at that level and maybe some adjustments.
Capital and resource adjustment.
So we'll see, depending on the year. But good news so far.
Next, leadership development and succession planning, which we're doing not only with onboarding our new administrators, Kim Sapone for Special Education, Christina Wilson in the guidance office, and Pete Pollak's, the director of Fine Arts. They're all doing really well and we're supporting them, but also supporting, we have a couple of administrators who are pursuing their doctoral studies. We have a few teachers who are pursuing their administrative degrees, and we're, we're always trying to continue to cultivate that. As, as we all know, Gina, Tim and I are a product of that succession planning at Brierman Hills, and we believe in it. And it's also nice to have outside perspectives, you know, having Peter, Pete come here from another district and to share his expertise. It's good to have a nice combination of people who have been here and people who have something to bring to Brierman. And education reform and advocacy, which should always be on there regarding mandates and curriculum changes and APPR and everything, standard equivalency, everything that goes along with that. For security, we had to continue to focus on the four essential goals of this district emergency response plan that was adopted, supporting increased surveillance at all buildings. Now, if you're driving by Coman Hill and you're seeing children outside, you are likely seeing a security guard in that area in addition to teacher aides. Assessment of prevention strategies to protect the data assets of the district. We have Tim Fashin, who is working with Andrew Taylor, who is taking over control of that data security piece. And procedures to respond to the data breach, which they have been working on and continue to refine with the support of Lyric and, and their team.
It's funny, because security is always the classic thing, as wasn't, as opposed to a goal, isn't just the ongoing work of the board, you always are going to look at that, but I think it's something you still want to highlight, given where we are. Any comments from board members on the proposed goals?
I think the great, I would, I would accent on the security. I think especially times in this where we're all distracted by COVID.
Yes.
But the idea of just making sure we're watching our backs at the same time, it's, there's a number of significant security alerts in and around cybersecurity that have been posted over the last month or two, and I think it's a really critical time for that.
Absolutely. I mean, I'm receiving things from, from Citibank and Chase that look legitimate, where we have accounts, right, that they're, and you know that they're not.
How many more Nigerian princes will I have to support? It's got to stop. Okay, at this point, does anyone have any objection to adopting these goals for our board goals for the 2020-21? Okay, motion to adopt the goals, please? Second. All in favor? Thank you, Jen, thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you all for that. It's nice to have that behind us, because we all know no matter what goals we get, there's always going to be something else.
There's always something else.
Okay, may I have a motion, please, to adopt this second read, Policy 5300, the Addendum to the Code of Conduct?
Seven seconds.
Okay, Jen?
Yeah, I'm actually going to turn that over to Tim and Gina.
Okay, Dr. K, Madam?
We, Jen, with the Policy Committee, I want to thank Jason and Lara for their work on this. This is an addendum to our Code of Conduct, which is Policy 5300. Just given the situation with hybrid and the potential for full remote learning, we felt these things were important to put in place and align it to our other return-to-school plan. So there's a few sections. The first section is on video conferencing guidelines. That was developed in collaboration with our task force this summer and the site-based team with Parents as well. And it also came off the heels of the spring and what we found to be useful from the spring, which teachers are now putting into place now as they have students in the hybrid model. So we think these guidelines match what's helping us just have some standards for, for student behavior when they're online. Second section is on temperature checks and screening. So it's following our return-to-school protocol about healthy checks, following CDC recommendations for home screenings, and also having our students who are checking their temperatures when they're coming in in the morning and following our guidelines and our return-to-school plan. And then we have a section on masks and social distancing, which requires masks and enforcing social distancing, and then implementing our comprehensive attendance policy, which is accounting for students who are learning remotely as well as in person, and then quarantining and following the state guidelines with quarantine and doing the contact tracing. We did take the recommendation from the board last, at the last meeting, which was adding that last line on Item 1 of the quarantining, which is that this relates to foreign and domestic travel.
Anything to add? Any discussion on the Code of Conduct, addendum, anyone want to be heard on this?
Was this, the Code of Conduct, that prompt the email that went out to the community about testing for tomorrow, like that they had to do these tests? Or that's just a random thing that was out?
Jen, what kind of electronic apps do you use?
Oh, that's just the New York State Department of Health. We're, we're supposed to be doing that. It's like a periodic thing that we have to make people do.
Is that only students who are going to be in-person learning?
Nope, everyone.
All students have to fill out that form? I don't know if that's clear.
Okay.
I got it for the next time. We're going to do it once a month, because it does say periodic, and we, we believe that a lot of our families, based on the emails and correspondences that we get, that they are checking their kids before they come to school, which is great. But we will clarify that, that piece.
Because I think people were questioning whether, oh, my kid's not going, my kid's home tomorrow.
They asked that on the high school copy this morning, and Krista clarified, but that was just the high school.
Yeah. Okay. And, and it doesn't affect kids, it's, it's not every day, but seven o'clock, so we'll clarify that.
You know, as a fallback measure, we're at, it's really the hybrid kids that you're talking about, and today's Tuesday, and it went out on Tuesday.
It went out on Monday.
It went out on Monday, so maybe you send it out again on Thursday. You know what I mean? So if anybody's confused, they can, if you didn't fill it out on Monday, fill it out today.
Are we getting the attendance data we need?
Yeah, yeah, we are.
I go into, okay, can I go, I completely misread it?
I misread it as well. I thought I'd have to fill it out tomorrow with my in-person child. That's fine, that's good, yeah. So I think we'll send something out saying if you did not fill it out already this week, fill it out now.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that would probably do it.
For all students, for the entire district, yeah.
Okay, all good?
Sort of like a reminder.
You have a motion made in second to adopt the review of Policy Second Read 5300, Code of Conduct Addendum. All in favor, please?
That's great.
Thank you. That brings us to 10.2, the per pupil expenditure report. Madam Superintendent, is this Kelly's on it?
This is Kelly.
Well, Tim wants to do it.
Yeah, can, can you set up? All right, I do like this.
Okay, so per pupil, this is the second year that we have to do it through the New York State Funding Transparency. Now, there's two different reports that we submit. The one we're talking about tonight is, is the Funding Transparency Form. There's another one, it's ESSA, Every Student Succeeds. That one's based on actual, okay? So this is the second year we do it, last year. So the numbers that I have, if you remember back last September, I talked about this, and we were going to go over it towards the end of the year, but, you know, everything happened and the data kind of got a little bit behind the state, so they finally completed that information. I have all that information for 1920, for the prior year budget. So that's what we can review and compare tonight. Just as a reminder, previous per pupils calculations, there was, it was confusing, because everybody had different situations. Some transported out, or used their transportation in-house, some used contractors. And there were different factors in each school. There's sort of really caused, caused kind of jumps in per pupil in neighboring districts, which really was apples to oranges in terms of comparison. So this, this report that we now have to submit is more of a way to accurately compare district to district. The great thing about it, the good thing about it that makes it more accurate is it takes out, it removes, it exempts transportation, debt service, and any students you're sending outside of your building. So your BOCs and your tuition special ed students. It's important to debt service, because that's what really causes this, this change from year to year. So again, this is based on budget, not actual expenditure. So 1920, we're about $35,000 average per pupil, and for 2021, based on budget, we're at 36.
Can you just explain to the community when they watch this, are you telling us that it's now costing roughly $1,600 more a year to send these kids to Brierman Hills?
Absolutely, it's not. So we're, we're at a flat budget, we're the same budget, zero. So, so again, with the calculation, this is where it kind of comes into the, the little factor that, that kind of makes it confusing. But if I go back a slide, the exempt portion is that debt service. And if you remember in the 1920 budget, we had a five, lower $5 million debt service. And going into this year, last year was the year we paid it off, that last bond payment we made last year. So we went from $5 million of debt that's exempt to about $2.5 million for 2021. So that, that additional money got fumbled back into our total pot divided by the students. Does that make sense?
Yes. It's asset, not a debt.
Yeah.
Very good, I like that.
Still an expense.
So, so, so it may look like a jump, a large jump, but in actuality, it's probably about the same. Just the difference is removing that debt from that pot, the total number. You can see the shift between buildings, and again, this is based on budget. And again, this, this is another thing where you, where you can, it's, it's, it's hard to explain, but I'll attempt.
So again, Kelly, I'm confused too. So this, it doesn't include transportation either?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's pretty much a flat. It's just, the difference really is just that debt service getting pulled out of the budget. Remember, this isn't actual expenditures, this is just budget-based. And remember, we have a flat budget. So the changes in Coman Hill and Wolf's, you'll see, and there was, if you look in the middle, there were changes in terms of students. So if you're, if you're, you know, you're dividing by less students or more students, you're going to have shifts in terms of the per pupil per building. We did budget for some positions at Coman Hill, the first grade section at Coman Hill, so there's a little difference in that amount, that, that explains kind of that shift a little. And we also budgeted some positions at Wolf's, two positions that we didn't fill. So again, this is based on budget, not actual.
Hey, Kelly, for the building numbers, do you, how do you, what do you do with the administrative expense?
Perfect, yeah, perfect, for segue. So, so the administrative expense, and the reason why the high school, you'll see a shift at a larger number, is if you remember the budget process, we decided to, to make an adjustment for our department chairs. In the past, we've always budgeted them as an administrative cost. And last year in the budget process, we, we added some of them, we added a portion of their FTD in the high school and the middle school. So that, that explains kind of that shift in those buildings. And we did that because the other form we need to submit, ESSA, requires that, and it's a per building, so it made more sense to shift them. So going forward, we're budgeting that way, which will kind of look together. So next year's dataset will kind of be easier to compare, because we'll be basically in the same spot debt-wise, so it'll be easier to compare per pupil. So administrative expense, you know, any salary for Jen or Tim, it's spread out by building depending on the actual student enrollment. So it's based on a percentage. Jen's salary, based on percentage, in each building, is spread out that way.
Pro-rata cost chair.
Yes. And we did have a shift, not a shift, but a small decrease in the total students from year to year.
And then special ed, elementary, like out of district, all that kind of stuff, is it just dependent on the age of the kid where it goes?
So the numbers you see for per building, so anybody that's of age of high school age is not calculated in that calculation. So any out-of-students we send to BOCs or we send to a program is, is removed from that.
Interesting. Is it in the 36,125, or is it, it's except for that too?
No, it's in that total number.
It's in the total of all the numbers.
Not per building.
It seems to me if we asked you to please calculate our per pupil expenditure, you might do it in a different way if the state is having us do it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think this is maybe more of an accurate way to do it. I've always, the per pupil has always been an issue with me, because every district has so many different factors. So I think this is a little better way to do it, I don't think it's perfect, though.
Well, then, the both important things have a consistency so you can compare, otherwise it's not consistent.
Then that's why, I, I agree with that concern, that when we do the, in, in our budget, the thing that ranks as 46th.
True tax rate. Tax rate, 51.
You know, that's consistent every year, and it gives us a real solid draw.
That's, that's more of an accurate measure in terms of tax, though.
I think it is.
Yeah, but you know, again, just to go back to your point, Scott, there is kind of issues, though, because some districts, how we budget for department chairs, we spread it out, some districts may not do that. So there is some kind of factors that it's a district choice to do.
For the building numbers, right.
Right.
Just as, as an example, and just so I understand this, Kelly, so if the debt service differential is about $2.5 million on 2,200 students, $1,000 per kid. So, so you equalize this, sort of a debt, right?
Yeah, it's a debt, yeah, right.
So, so all I'm saying is, so Brierman Hills was, you know, 36.7 to 34, it's, you know, if you adjust it for the debt service, it's, you know, 37.4 versus 36.7, something like that.
Yeah, but there's, there's other things, like, you know, maybe an increase for security in the budget last year, so that gets allocated over the buildings as well, so. Not just the debt, there's other things as we go by.
I guess the other thing to remind us of is that the state put forth this building per pupil expense, because they were worried about districts that have multiple buildings in the same grade level, getting equitable treatment. We don't have that issue, because we have one school at every grade level. So for us, the overall number is really important. The numbers by building lessen more.
Right, I agree with you, yeah, that was the point of this, just to show that each building is getting an appropriate amount budget-wise, there's no...
Right, if you have four elementary schools and they're vastly different, those you got to figure out a lot.
So in terms, in terms of comparison by schools, now, you're going to see a list of, not every school needed to submit this year. So last year, I think it was five or more, if you had five or more schools. 1920, if you had four or more schools. And then I think the following year for 2021 this year, what I've done, every school has to report it. So not every school, so you're not going to see every school in this area. But these are the ones, and again, this is 1920, prior year budget amount.
2020.
1920.
2019, 2020.
2000, okay, thank you.
Right, prior school, right. So you can see in terms of elementary schools, we're, we're, both our schools are around 33,000. So we're, we're pretty much in line with Bedford and Catona and some of the larger, Valhalla as well, being in some larger numbers. Middle school being 36,000, you know, similar to the area. Again, remembering you had that shift budget-wise. And then the high school being at 36, in line with the districts in this area.
I guess I would say, though, I mean, just looking at these numbers dispassionately, on a percentage basis, we are, we are higher. And so, and I, I think that one of the useful things to do is to dig into, like, the bridge between the average of our peers and where we are, just to really understand, like, how much of the difference is, let's say, the, the level of our teaching workforce, because that, that's something that could be behind some of it, right?
Yeah, the veteran.
How much of it is class size, right over here?
Yeah, so, so those are the factors, I think.
Yeah, we have no turnover.
And that's what I want to do with the...
Highly veteran, highly tenured, highly paid base.
Right, retirement is, yeah. And a neighboring school might have 30 kids in a class.
Right.
Maybe, although you wouldn't expect that with Chappaqua, I'm scared of that, but maybe, maybe.
Well, but you look at some of the other districts, you can say, yes, it is.
I don't know, it's the same thing, it's not.
Anyway.
Because that's why, you know, we don't know at that point. That's the, I guess, the problem with the per pupil. But again, like you just said, veteran staff, you know, we have experienced staff in all our buildings, class sizes, you know, the electives that we're offering in our buildings, and, you know, our technology, our instructional technology that we have for our students. So that's something I want to do with the finance advisory committee. Really want to analyze this data, compare the districts, and really just dig down to where it is. You know, do we have more staff? Do we have more clerical than the other buildings? Something like that. So we can kind of get the idea and really get the data to why we have that.
That would be interesting, and if we're going to find out, your findings on December eight, we will look forward to that.
Yeah. And again, I have nineteen twenty data, which is fine. So I'll be doing that. I'll analyze that, and we'll share with the finance advisory, and we'll come back in December and try to clear it up a little more than I have tonight.
These are really good examples.
Right.
Very interesting, Kelly, we look forward to that presentation. Any other questions to Kelly on this?
Are you able to get the numbers, the detailed numbers from the other districts?
Yeah, I have, you can get the spreadsheet. It doesn't show where the calculations is, but it'll show, we can compare, you know, slide to slide of where, cell to cell, and excel what it is.
Okay. That brings us to our superintendents.
All right, everyone. So just a quick little return to school update report. Tim is going to be giving one that's more curriculum-based, and I will be covering everything from dismissal, transportation, a little bit on what classrooms are looking like for that instruction, technology, the concept of a snow day pilot, movement breaks, mask breaks, use of outdoor spaces, and then how the district is responding to these COVID cases. So dismissal. How have we managed so many cars? We are basically deploying enough cars for a very large wedding every day from multiple schools. And we looked at dismissal times. Coman Hill, you can see the first day of school had a really beautiful one hour, forty-five minute dismissal lineup of cars clogging up Route twenty-two. Wampus on the same day had an hour and a half. Now we have gotten, Coman Hill, we have a little bit of a staggered system at Coman Hill, but starting at three o'clock, it, on the eighteenth, took us twenty-six minutes to deploy two hundred and twenty cars.
That's amazing.
And Friday, the eighteenth, but it's still not even good yet. Like, we still, we have a lot of room to grow, right? Kelly and I are over there every day.
Amazing.
Mary Beth and Janie Marie.
Every day.
We have to, we needed to get a second tier of a plan, a third tier of a plan. The problem is, you know, Wampus is a little bit easier. Cars that are outside of the lot are on a road. And cars can pass by there. And we created a separate lane. At Coman Hill, they're on twenty-two, and they are preventing anyone from going in there. So while we're getting them out quickly, and we're always looking, like, how far are the cars backing up, we're taking a lot of data. We're helping Mary Beth and Janie Marie to refine those processes in the training of kids to get them out faster, with the QR code system that we put into place there. The second graders and their siblings are getting released a few minutes earlier than everybody else, and we have to crunch that time a little bit more, so it will take a little more. Kelly knows most.
Progress for perfection.
It is. Kelly knows most of the kids' names and what their cars look like already. He's calling them by name, it's quite impressive. Yeah, we've already picked out, like, our.
You with the Tesla, no, go ahead.
Yeah, no.
I may have to pick up just to see this.
We're watching these little kids, though, it's interesting. Over time, we're watching them learn how to open their car doors themselves, put their seatbelts on themselves. They couldn't do it the first day. I don't know if there was a kid there that could have opened the car door themselves, but they're getting there. Dismissals. At the high school, we moved the buses in at one forty-five, not that the kids are getting on them at one forty-five, but so they are not getting caught in the traffic. So we had to think about different strategies like that. HCC, when the buses are leaving, they're on time, and some of them get caught in the traffic of people coming in for pickups. And Wampus, and Coman Hill, the buses were coming a little bit later because of some of that backup. But when you look at ridership, ridership is down. So you can see as of nine eight what the numbers were, but I want to, I'll go into ridership two slides from now to show you a little bit more. We've taught all of our drivers how to do alternate routes to get to places so that they don't get stuck in this traffic.
Wait a minute, can you go back?
Sure.
Is that a hundred and forty-one kids, and the entire district are taking the bus?
No, that's high school, middle school.
Right.
That's seven hundred kids in the district, so.
Oh, wait, two slides away, you'll be, wait, I have the big reveal, hold on. All right, so this is weekly ridership. So as of nine sixteen, just to show you, in the morning, we were transporting five hundred and ninety-two kids, and in the afternoon, on this specific day, five hundred and ninety-nine. The yellow-coded are buses that we were watching, or we thought had more than one student per seat. So Phil has been watching that, monitoring that, splitting buses, since we don't have activity buses in the afternoon, he's been able to split buses when he sees those issues starting to arise. So this is like how he's flagging buses and ridership to make sure that we're trying our best to make sure we don't have two kids in a seat. Sometimes we have to. But this is really the bus ridership then and now. So in December of two thousand nineteen, when we did these transfinders study, when they came and looked at our ridership, we had fourteen hundred and fifty-four kids in the morning to our current five hundred and ninety-two kids in the morning. So when we're looking at traffic backups at these schools, that's why, right?
And there's twenty-two hundred kids?
There are twenty-four, it's close to twenty-four hundred, twenty-three, seventy-one.
Now, there's a chunk that are early in any given day.
Actually, but I have the enrollment report.
Twenty-two eighty-four.
Twenty-two eighty-four.
That's actually a very good point.
Yeah, that's good, but the hybrid impact in some ways.
Hybrid impacted, right.
But nevertheless.
It's true.
Still more of a D.
Oh, of course, yeah. Very, very significant, not surprising.
So that's transportation. Now we move on to classroom spaces. So what do classrooms look like now compared to pre-COVID? Now you will see an art space that has been turned into a classroom, giving kids tons of room, having some dividers between them, really beautiful classroom spaces that teachers have converted other spaces to. This is at Wampus, and this is in what used to be the art room. Here is the technology learning center at Coman Hill, which has been turned into a classroom, also very similar. And I want to point out in both of these pictures so far, seeing kids do very traditional educational learning. Tim's focuses heavily on the technology part of the learning, but I thought it was good to also show that kids are still doing some manual things. Here we have a tech class at the high school, a science class with Steve Borneman. I point this out because all of the kids who are at home, you'll see various cameras throughout his classroom, all the kids who are at home are actually watching what you're seeing on the PLEAF board right now, which is pretty amazing.
It's incredible, actually.
Really redefines it.
Testament.
It's amazing.
That was from the BHF, right?
Yeah, from the Barbeys Education Foundation, they gave us the USonic devices to enable that. And Tim has a lot of really good pictures to show that. And then the question is, well, how did we prepare our staff for the technology needs that Tim is going to be showing you? I just want to take, these are just some of Andrew Taylor's notes. This is like Jen Lomia got into Andrew Taylor's notebook. So the technology needs on the left, this was when we were going out for the summer, the training on the right, and what kind of training he was going to have to do, everything from every kind of workshop. And then he whittled down his fall task list. This is his most recent list of what he is working on right now. So just to show the magnitude of his planning and what he had to do regarding that. And some of the stuff in the left-hand column, you can't even understand. I don't even know what juniper switching equipment possibly, I don't even know those. But a lot of work on the part of Andrew Taylor and our BTCs, who were amazing at each building, Reka Singh at Coman Hill, Al Lovelace at Wampus, Dawn Stelnis at the middle school, and Peter Lichten at the high school, and all of our computer aids, all of our network specialists who really did so much, Raymond and Richard Bent, Mauricio. So now the question is, with all of this technology, will we ever need a snow day? I think that's the biggest question people ask me now. Are we not going to have snow days anymore? And the answer is not, the answer is about as easy as the New York State Public High School Athletic Association document paired with the New York State Department of Health documents and New York State Ed documents. It's about as clear as that. And this is the reason, you know, we have to have a lot of conversations that are upcoming with our teachers, and we have to consider the needs of the community. So we may have a snow day, and I might say, it's a remote day, only to find out that three-quarters of our school district has no power. Well, what kind of remote day are you doing? Or that I have thirty percent of my teaching force that doesn't have power wherever they are, right? So this isn't as easy as just turning everything into a remote day. But it is an interesting pilot, and we are going to look at it, because especially during times like this, you don't want kids missing instruction if you don't have to. So we will have further conversations about that with the teachers. And then this part, this is my favorite. How did we prepare for these mask breaks, for the movement breaks, for the outdoor spaces? Look at this K five, whether it's Go Noodle, or art dancing, or outdoor spaces, class walks, this is just a short list. HCC, the mask and brain breaks for thirty minutes during team wellness. Kim trying to close off the main circle to allow more room at lunches, or to have courtyard spaces set up for kids to go out for lunch, and to have outside spaces for learning. And the high school really managed by teacher, but they do go out quite a bit. But this I liked, because this was, this is me in Peggy's notebook, Peggy McInerney's notebook and Peggy McInerney's mind. So for her, she said, well, I have to kind of think of, what are the natural movement breaks that occur in a child's day? When do these mask breaks need to happen? And what kind of outdoor spaces, you know, what are we going to do about those outdoor spaces so that we could start to think about how else we're going to get kids like this? Stretches during daily skills block. That's not something that they would have done before. So she wanted to really break it down into, you know, even if you're moving around in the classroom or you're doing anything like that, how much are these kids getting up? So I like to see a little bit more granular thinking behind that, which was there. So this is. Here's a little. Well, let me see if I can. This is a little movement break. Mix, mix, mix. They're cooking. So just to give you a sense of, this is what it's come down to, right? And I have to say, you know, just a lot of credit to the teachers who are doing that, they're just breaking apart from their academics for a minute to do these movement breaks for kids. Outside, kids socially distancing, doing different activities. Thank you to the BHF for these sunshades, and kids going out there to have snack. I always like to find who I think is the most adorable child of the day, and here he is, having his snacks socially distanced with his friends, right? Tim Colton-Ecker and I do that, we have our, like, favorite child everywhere we go for that particular moment.
Enjoying his snacks.
Yep, enjoying his snacks. He just looks happy as a clam, he's the reason we come to work.
It's a great picture.
And here we have a physical education class happening outside with kids participating and staying distanced from each other.
So those movement breaks, are those happening at every grade level since the period?
Those are all over the elementary grade levels.
Elementary, what about high school, middle school?
Middle school, high school are moving classes, they're doing a lot more than they're doing. Like, the elementary are staying in their room to eat lunch, essentially, they're staying in that spot, art is coming to them, music is coming to them. And the middle school and the high school, it's much different. So Kim is doing, like, through the wellness break piece, she's working on that with them at the middle school more to give kids movement breaks to do.
Has there been more space made available for lunch at the middle school?
Yeah, there is a lot more space.
At the high school, that's really, I think, really important.
Yeah. And then the last one, responding to COVID nineteen. We continue to follow this safety response protocol from Butnam, Northern Westchester BOCs, which I've shared before, which really gives us an example of what we're supposed to be doing, sort of like that decision tree, Scott, that we were talking about. Although, remember, we are not making decisions as a school district. We look at this, we call the Department of Health, but this gives us a gauge as to what the Department of Health is likely going to tell us. So a contact of a contact number three, for example, so if, you know, I had contact with someone who was a contact of a person with COVID, you'll see that the Department of Health will tell us that there's no immediate action required, that until the person I had contact with becomes symptomatic, I'm deemed okay by the Department of Health. So that is what they would tell us, and that is what this decision tree kind of gives us a frame for thinking about as we approach.
And the COVID coordinator is within the district or outside?
Yes, Gina Cunningham and I are the COVID coordinators. We know COVID. And then there is the.
Can you defront him, if you want to front him, please?
There is the COVID report card, which is filled out every single day, and that includes numbers of students who are sent home, numbers of students who have COVID, or staff who have COVID, and that report card is available for people to look at. We have not had anything recently. And then what is next for the final part of my report? Next, as you heard tonight, is the return to athletics protocols. And not just getting some of the bigger pieces down, but getting down the granular pieces of what does a practice look like, what does a game look like? Very much like what we did in schools. We came across a master plan, but then in the days right before school started, you saw people painting sidewalks and putting down stickers and creating one-way hallways. You know, it's not just about saying we're going to socially distance, but what does that actually look like? That is that part of my report. The second part of the report, Mike hit on it before, but just our enrollment numbers with twenty-one more students than the demographers' projection, with eleven more at Coman Hill, Wampus had one more, HCC had three less, that's basically a cohort moving out of HCC and a smaller one moving in, and the high school with twelve more students, totaling altogether two thousand two hundred and eighty-four students. And I wanted to point out some upcoming events. We are going to be focusing on the senior games now, and not any kind of homecoming games, unfortunately. We will, on October fourteenth, be hosting the PSAT and the SAT at our high school, and because the timing of those tests will only allow for one academic period at the end of the day, it's going to be a remote day for any student at the high school who's not taking the test. We will have our back-to-school nights at the high school, October fifteenth, it will be virtual, and October twenty-second at HCC, so everyone can expect to hear from their principals about that. On October twenty-first, I will be meeting virtually with the PTSA Working Parents Committee. And November third, we have a Board of Education meeting. Kelly is also working with the county regarding the elections, because the county has deemed that our high school needs to be an election facility as well. He is talking to the county Board of Elections to see if we might be able to switch that from the high school, perhaps to the town library, which I think has the facility and the spacing for that, so we're still trying to work on that. But we have pretty much been told that we do not have a say, that, you know, it's been due to us.
But it's amazing, can we use a more remote spot, like the lower gym, or something that doesn't?
Oh, that's exactly what we would do. We would have one section of the gym. Yep, that's all we would do.
Or can we just have, can it be tent on the field or something?
The concession stand would be used.
No, I was going to say, like, tent the field or something, you know?
I think the lower gym makes the most sense.
And of course, the board has a lot of notes in my notes about the interim commissioner, Betty Rosa, being appointed, the Westchester Butnam School Board happenings that are in there, and the virtual conference that is going to be taking place for Ms. Buck. I know Scott and I registered for that, I'm not sure if anybody else is. And the last item from me is our national merit, five national merit semifinalists this year, which is really great. So I want to congratulate Jordan Bernard, Luke Brioti, Talia Dinstein, Jared Ilan, and Katherine Tillich. That's amazing. We had three semifinalists last year, so we're really excited for these students to join the ranks of their peers, and we wish them luck through this process.
We thank you very much for that report. Any further questions with the superintendent?
All right.
Deputy Tim.
Okay, I'll get my presentation.
I'll do it.
And so I'm titling this Teaching Reinvented. I think it's really a new era of teaching right now during this pandemic, and I want to show this from the teacher's point of view. This is an overview to give you a snapshot of what classrooms are looking like, and I ask you to think about what new skills teachers need to succeed in this, and also, from the student's point of view, what new skills do students need? Because that's something we think about, to succeed in this environment. I'll also start looking deeply at aspects of our curriculum over the next several board meetings and show you some presentations. But to give you a little bit of what it's like, on the left, you see our Coman Hill students taking the diagnostic tests. We are, about seventy-five percent of the students finished at Coman Hill, a hundred percent are finished at Wampus, about a third at Quicken Dim. And you can see that this diagnostic assessment is in reading and mathematics, which was to help identify students who might have some gaps from the spring. We're also finding this a really productive assessment. So what the test does, as I was watching it, I was involved in the implementation, it starts with games, so the kids get used to, like, learning the instructions, and they play a little game, and then it starts going right into the assessment. So what I noticed is kids just thought this whole thing was a game, they had no idea they were taking a test, and I thought that was pretty brilliant. Also, remember, as I reported before when you adopted this, that it was an adaptive test. So if you're getting answers right, it gets harder, so we can see where the ceiling is. If you're missing it, it goes down levels. So that's really good. Tomorrow, which is Wednesday, if you, you know, you remember, the elementary schools have a half-day. We are part of our day tomorrow. We use that for professional learning. Tomorrow, we're actually having training on the next phase of IRE, which is looking at the reports that we get, the data reports, and how to make meaning of that, and how to assign then the learning pathways for students. So that's all happening tomorrow afternoon for the elementary, and for middle school teachers are jumping into that as well. On the right, I'm showing you an example of one of our remote teachers who's teaching the kids who are full remote, and I call it the command station. And they're gonna see this throughout my slides, that teacher now have command stations. And you'll see her there, working from, you know, multiple computers or Viewsonics over here. Notice the document camera, which is showing something that she can project to the kids at home as well. So that's an example of a teacher who's teaching remotely in her corner over at Coman Hill. On the left here, you see students from Doug Mayer's fifth-grade classroom, where kids watched a video of an experiment, and then on a shared document up here, they would write their hypothesis about why the reaction occurred the way it did. And Mr. Mayer goes around and has some individual conversations with kids. So it's finding ways to engage kids in some productive learning and still making them feel as though it's collaborative with their classmates and getting them to think deeply about the content. On the right, I just thought I'd show a picture of the old-fashioned way of learning, where kids are still coloring and doing some of those other things, as Jen showed in her slides as well. Again, here's some more pictures of the Viewsonic in action. Again, thanks to the Coman Hills Education Foundation. Our, I'd probably say, almost every teacher at the high school is using it, and most teachers at our middle school. We are doing some turnkey training at the elementary classrooms right now. You'll see on the left here, Bill LaRue, a math teacher, writing on it, showing a problem. I think this was a calculus class, so you can see kids on this, in the classroom can see it's projected on this Promethean board, as well as he's, you know, kids here that are at home on this computer. Ms. Dahl is talking to her kids who are at home, who are projected on the Promethean board. And same thing with Mr. Young here, talking to his kids on this computer as he's sharing the screen with the kids at home and in class. And also, Elise Sauer, a math teacher, writing on the board here on her Viewsonic, which projects the students at home and to the kids in the classroom. So that gives you a sense of these teachers who, this was the first week of school with these teachers, jumping right into that technology tool. This again, Jen showed a picture of Steve Bornham's chemistry class, and I captured this moment and wanted to point out the complexity of it. And Mr. Walsh just did an observation of his classroom, and I'll point that out. You'll see here these red circles. These are three different cameras that are hooked up to three different computers. So that's all logged into his Zoom that these kids at home are logged into. So you have this student doing a problem on the board, and you've got this camera up here projecting on that, and you can see that up here in the screen. That's the board here, that's that person. You've got this camera who's on Mr. Bornham, and so he can talk to the kids at home. This camera right now is pointing to the kids in the class, so the kids at home can see the kids in the classroom. When he does a demonstration, he'll like use that to show the demonstration. So I thought Chris captured it perfectly where he said, "I felt like you were not only teaching content, but you were directing a movie. You have to plan three or four steps ahead of the students that have the cameras in the right place at the right time." And he will tell kids, he'll say, "Okay, now I want you to pin camera two to the screen." So kids know what to be looking at at home. So he directs them to which cameras to put on the screen as he's going through the class. And I was talking to Steve today, and he's very energized by this, as many teachers are, looking at this as a challenge of how they really use these new tools and engage kids in their classroom.
Did he request these additional cameras to be placed?
Yeah, so apparently, we found out that the English teachers didn't have cameras, and we wondered whether they were all gone, so-- So we're now, we do have plenty of cameras around. Andrew bought a lot in the spring because teachers wanted them at home. So he's distributing those, and we are getting them to the English teachers. The science teacher sort of scrounged up some actual cameras.
I've just gotta chime in and say, since I have a child in that class, it is unbelievably upsetting, I haven't seen it firsthand myself, but from what I hear, it is a seamless experience between home and school. It is truly extraordinary.
That's great.
Yeah, it's really, he's put a lot of time, Steve is a creative teacher, and he looks at this as a challenge. How do I engage everybody and make it feel like they're all there together? And that was one of our goals, if you recall, and being patient with us, over the summers, we were developing this process, and we were talking about the theoretical framework of how do we engage kids with the teacher, how do we engage them with content, and how do we engage them with each other? And teachers are really taking on that challenge of that framework of how do we do that and finding these tools helpful? Going on to some other classes, this is Joanna Lewick, who's having a class discussion with kids at home and kids in the classroom. And you'll also see on the computer here, this was the kid's computer, where kids also were posed questions, and this is like a, it's like a virtual bulletin board, a shared bulletin board, where kids are writing notes on it, and they can respond to each other's thinking. So they do some activities virtually, so they're all participating, like we would do group work with students, but now doing it virtually, but still engaging them in conversations with each other. And I'm very impressed that teachers are finding ways to have group discussions with kids at home and in the classroom at the same time. And all the teachers are telling me they thought it would be harder than it is. I mean, it is hard, but they're actually able to do it. They thought it just wouldn't work. And they're making it work, and they're saying, kids are really wanting this interaction, and they're very happy by that. This is interesting software, with this new sort of productivity tool that the science research teachers found, which is basically like a blank canvas that you can drop different types of documents into, whether it's a spreadsheet or a PDF, or there's other types of templates you can use, and at the same time have a video chat, all within the same program. So kids are talking to their partners who are at home, and they're collaborating on their science research work. Because science research is very complex and involves a lot of people having conversations and working through your work together, so kids can share their canvas, and kids can get feedback from other kids in it, so they can still maintain that strong group, community collaboration that is so important in the science research program. This is another teacher who utilizes multiple cameras. I think he's got one up here and one down here. This is John Lopez, who's teaching studio art. He also has a lighting mechanism, so he can get the right lighting for his artwork and his sketches. He'll sometimes turn the lights off in the room, and then he has the light here on him. So he's doing a whole lighting thing. If you know John, does musical productions, and is really good with the lighting. And this is his command station, how he's also, again, doing what other teachers were doing, but doing it in art, by engaging kids at home and in the classroom at the same time. This is Kat Daws, who was really figuring out group work and was really excited. So you can see in her Viewsonic, her laptop and her desktop all working in conjunction with each other. She had kids doing group work, so kids were in small group work with kids from both in class and at home together. So they're talking to each other. You notice kids have earbuds in, so that they're not getting disturbed, that they can have conversations. And at the same time, they have like shared documents they're working on, each group, so the teacher can monitor the students' work as they're working in their small groups, and she can comment on it. So she's doing the same thing she would do normally, by putting kids in group and walking around the room, and this way, she's still doing and emulating that sort of in a virtual way. And the kids really like doing it, and she was very happy at the results.
And to think there was a time where we thought Facebook was amazing.
I know, right? Look at this. It's pretty incredible. So this was Robin Drake, a social studies teacher, having a group discussion with, again, kids at home here on her screen, as well as in the classroom. And notice as you look at these command stations, you see the Viewsonic, you see laptops, you see document cameras, sometimes you see a desktop as well. And this was a math teacher. So she's using her document camera, she's writing here, you see it on her Viewsonic, which is projecting to the kids at home, and so up on the board over here, and kids doing work individually. So they're able to really engage kids everywhere in the work. And lo and behold, it's not all with technology. This is our band class, enjoying the good weather we're having outside and practicing outside. So that's just giving you a snapshot of some of the complexities of what new skills teachers are learning, and what I think it's taking from the student's point of view as well. What I find amazing is the kids at home are feeling really engaged. Teachers actually like seeing the kids at home, because kids don't have their masks on when they're at home, and teachers were saying, actually, you know what they look like when they're at home? When they're in class, they have their masks on, it's a little different. And kids, I think, at the beginning of the year were somewhat tentative, and some teachers were telling me, you know, having to work hard to draw them out, but now, in the fourth week, kids are getting comfortable, and they're starting to feel kids being a little more comfortable in this environment.
Gina, I'm wondering whether the remote learning students, whether there's any shift from kids who are home coming back and going home, they tend to be pretty steady, the ones who are coming to school are coming to school, and the ones who are remote learning are pretty much staying on remote learning.
For the most part, you had a couple of students on that?
Yeah, so we've had a couple students who chose full remote, transitioning back because their family situations are changing. Now, the impetus to being full remote was that you had to fall into a high-risk, vulnerable group. And as family situations change, they're starting to come back, and a handful have come back.
Tim, as usual, just a very thoughtful, great presentation.
Please, thank you. Thank the teachers and the administrators and everyone for making this wow. It's incredible.
Any questions with Tim on the presentation?
No, but Tim, I think about the beginning of this with offering all of those professional development opportunities over the summer, you know, where teachers at first, they weren't used to this, they weren't used to being in a place with everywhere, right?
There's no textbook on this, there's no anything.
Right, and so many people took those classes, and they struggled with it, because they said, "Well, you know, it's like being at a big buffet. Like, I'm not really sure, should I breakfast, lunch, dinner, which one's gonna work for me?" So it really wound up being something that they had to figure out for their own personal teaching and learning styles. And I think your ability to let people find and decide on what worked for them in their classrooms and modeling to do that enabled that to happen. But I, when I see things like this, and when I walk around the schools, I am overwhelmed by what our teachers are doing in their classrooms. It is nothing that anyone could have anticipated. It is beyond my expectations. It really is.
And think about it, New York City hasn't even gone back to school.
I know.
And we're a month into school, so kudos to you and to all the teachers and administrators. You guys are doing a great job.
Well, we're here because teachers agree to be here. And that speaks a lot to our teachers and our teacher aides and our administrators and everybody who didn't push back on that.
Right, and the work they've put in over the summer, I mean, you know intimately from our presentations throughout the summer on all the task force committees that were put together, the subgroups that really worked detail on this, and the administrative team who worked hard on organizing that work to make sure the pieces were in place for it, as well as the operations being there, so everyone felt safe coming back. It's really a work from so many different problems coming together to make this function.
I think it also, you guys involved them from day one in the decision-making process. They were involved every step of the way. They didn't, they had no point felt like they were on the receiving end of a decision that was being made, and they just had to do it, which I think a lot of districts did, and the teachers were reacting to that. I think, you know, you guys did a really good job of involving them in every decision from day one.
Yeah, I mean, it's easier on one hand for the three of us, four of us, sat up here and made all the decisions, and then told teachers, but then it would be hard now, right? So it was hard work to do that, because there were sometimes some challenges and difficulties. And then at the end, though, what we're getting is just incredible work because of our teachers stepping up to this challenge, and by you helping us provide the resources for them to be able to do that job.
Very open, sorry, to feed back from the community too, by doing the survey and really listening to what worked, what didn't work in the spring, and, you know, heading that straight on early, early on enough for us to be able to open. I mean, it really goes to all of you for being able to do that and really being very proactive.
In a weird way, starting this in March really helped starting this in September.
Yeah, yeah. We've been working since March, yes. Absolutely, and I mean, what you've accomplished, I mean, the children are happy and excited to go to school. I mean, they can't wait to go, and they're in-person days, and that's something, that's, you know, that's something to be very, very happy about.
And you'll receive the feedback now, even as things progress.
My folks are on the front.
Yes.
I know, that's fine, right? The, are we, are there any families in the district where they're saying they have technology issues or connectivity issues, where we're having any gaps there?
If we have, we've helped that with Wi-Fi and providing them with their technology needs, but--
Yeah, there were a few issues for the, you know, at first, particularly with the full remote students, a handful, and our tech team has resolved those issues.
That's great. I think we're so fortunate. My daughter is doing some training in Chicago for kids that are having technology issues at home and stuff like that, and I mean, we're just very, very fortunate with who will be at here, so it's great. All right, thank you. It was great.
And we have to thank our community for following the rules, for the most part, and keeping us all safe so that we can continue going to school.
For the most part.
I said for the most part. There have been disappointments, but for the most part, I think we've all risen, our community has risen to the challenge.
Okay, Tim, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank us all, thank all of you.
Kelly?
Just real quick, our first finance advisory committee meeting will be at the next board meeting in two weeks. We'll talk about the 2021 budget, guidelines, calendar.
Already?
Yep, it's time. People will go over that, talk about tax, there are some pilots, and then go forward, start the process.
It's ground talk, though.
The leaves on the trees start to move, and we start to work on that budget.
Faster than I thought.
Yeah, okay, thank you, Kelly. Moving forward to the president's report. I just want to say I've had a chance to converse with various community members of kids in the schools, not only here, but in other districts. And I must say, when they learn that you're from Coman Hills, they say, "My goodness, you know, we read the return to school plan, and it's amazing, and, you know, we think it's the state of the art, we think we should be doing it." And I've heard this about for more than one district in Westchester, so really, kudos to you guys for putting together the plan that really has really, I think it set the benchmark of what a district can do. And it's unusual for parents really to stop me in the street, but I've really been stopped a couple times, and people want to talk about it, and they're just thrilled with their kids' experiences. From the youngest schools to the high school, it's just been a very, it's been wonderful. It's not perfect, of course, and we're never gonna claim it perfect, but I think it's gone very well, and we hope it will continue to go well. Knock on whatever we can find, yeah. It's a lot of it, no matter how great we are, a lot of it's still out of our control. And I just want to echo, ahead of my notes, actually echo what Lori said, thanking the community board's support of our program, support of the school, support of the board, and especially of all support for the back-to-school program. It really couldn't work well without your support, cooperation, and willingness to follow what has been set out to be the plan. These are certainly difficult, unusual, uncharted times, and you're making it easier for your children, you're making it easier for the district, and in a sense, then you're making it easier for yourselves. So thank you, and we look forward to really your continuing cooperation, understanding that the district is always open to hear your suggestions, comments. If you think there's a better mousetrap, we're happy to listen to it. We give many opportunities for community feedback, so we're always willing to listen in and hear from you. Okay, any committee or board member, any committee reports or board members at this point?
I've got two things. Well, one, the B H E F kickoff meeting was a couple weeks ago, it was great. Everybody was fired up for a nice, exciting year and in good spirits. And then, secondly, with regional advocacy, now's the time when the agenda kind of comes together for the region, and there's some interesting things on it this year, I think, that could be helpful, and that maybe we could be somewhat optimistic about. The first being, if there's ever a year where unfunded mandates that don't make sense might actually fall off the wayside, it's this year, because there's not money. So at least help us with the expenses that are unnecessary. So there's gonna be a lot of push on that. Obviously, state aid and any COVID reimbursement issues. The election day issue and polling in schools has definitely come up, because many schools at this point, you know, it's locked in, and there are a number of schools now that have decided on that date and go with virtual learning, because it really flies in the opposite face of the guidance that we got from the state about guest being a building. So we want to obviously, you know, aid election processes wherever we can, but this is not necessarily a great year to do it, so that's an issue that we're trying to move on, you know, from a state perspective. And then a couple of others, the, just getting consistent guidance from DOH up in Albany and locally, there have been stories of just inconsistencies, and as things work through, we need consistency. And then, lastly, there were two resolutions put forth by neighboring districts here for the School Board Association, you know, agenda on trying to make it easier for us to look to other Rosies in addition to our local Rosies for services, not for structural, this is not structural, but for non-structural services, to the extent that there's, you know, more economic way to procure those services. So those are interesting resolutions that were put forward. So that's the report.
If we have to have the elections in our school buildings, do we get, does somebody pay for security, extra security?
And cleaning?
Yeah, I think it's billable to the--
It's billable to the county.
County, the county.
Are they gonna pay it? I know, it could be billable.
I don't think we've ever been stiffed.
No.
We've never been stiffed by the county. It goes to Board of Elections, and they wind it. There's a general budget item for this, and they do tend to make good on it. Otherwise, we won't count the votes.
Isn't everyone absentee balloting this year?
Yeah, okay. Let's see, we have further events, and any other committee board member reports? And Scott, again, thank you for taking the lead on our relations with outside districts. And Scott, again, thank you for taking the lead on our relations with outside districts. I think you've developed a lot of street cred out there, and you can really help us, so thank you. September 25th, it looks like we're gonna have the first town school district liaison meeting at the town hall. Is it a live, in-person meeting?
From what I know.
Yeah, okay, well, if the changes let us know. And we have a policy committee meeting, 8:30 a.m. on October 15th. Any topics of future gender RFI's at this point? Okay. Communication to the board, none that I'm aware of, other than the consistent verbal feedback we're getting from the community on this, which we know will continue, which is fine. All right, may I have a motion, please, to approve the Board of Education minutes for the meetings of July 28th, August 11th, and August 25th, 2020?
Some moves.
Do a second, please. Any comments?
We might have to break those out, because I was absent from the, one of the meetings.
Okay, well...
Yeah, same with me, so.
That's fine, so we'll take it one more time.
And I just have, like, two, two small edits to the 28th, just the word cohort, just it was coherent, just changed cohort on page eight, and there was a line right before the graduation discussion, said, where I said "that" being our best solution, it was "masks" being our best solution. That's all, just a little.
Okay, we'll deem that to be a motion to amend the minutes of the Board of Education of July 28th. Everyone was there. May I have a second to approve that, those minutes, please? All in favor? All right, may I have a motion, then, please, to approve the minutes of August 11th, at which Mr. Levy was absent?
Some moves.